Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the August session of the Paulding County Planning Commission. I would ask this time if you have an audible device, please turn it off or silence so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings of the meeting. This time I will entertain a motion with regard to the minutes from the previous session of this body. Has everybody had a chance to review those? I know that we have one edit from the original publication that was sent out that's been corrected. It was just two missing names and we have those ready now. So I will take a motion. A motion to approve from Mr. Henson. I have a second from Mr. Steele. All in favor. Motion passes five, zero, and one. We do have a missing member today, Mr. Ellis Aston. He is out due to medical. Let's all keep him in our thoughts and prayers that he would get better quickly. I know we have some changes to the agenda. I was going to ask Mr. Robinson if you would announce those.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Application 2022-10Z, application by Trading LLC. That application's been forwarded again to September 26th, Planning Commission Board of Commissioners meeting. And 2022-11Z, application by Adam Baker. That application's been forwarded also to the September 26, 2022 meeting. And 2212Z, Adam Baker. They've all been forwarded to the September meeting.
All right. Paulding County Planning Commission is a recommending body for the Board of Commissioners and at times for the City of Hiram whenever they have applications that take place in cities' boundaries. Basically, we will hear the application. The person presenting it has 15 minutes to present the application. They can utilize all of that time or conserve some for rebuttal if they desire to do so. But additionally, anybody wishing to speak on behalf of the application, aside from the applicant, also comes out of that pool of 15 minutes. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to an application or may have questions, comments, or concerns are also allotted a total of 15 minutes. So if you get up to speak and you see anybody standing behind you, please be mindful of their time as well. We try to make sure that we get everybody that we can heard during those 15 minutes for either side. The information from today's meeting, the recommendations, will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting tonight at six. So if you have an interest, the applicant must be present for it to be considered both here and at the Board of Commissioners meeting. But if you have an interest in the application at hand, you would also be advised to be present at the Board of Commissioners meeting tonight at six o'clock, this same meeting room. So at this time, I would ask Mr. Robinson if you would please introduce the first application.
Okay. Application 2022-01Z, application by Richard Butler in care of heirs of the Butler estate, requesting to rezone 0.74 acres from A1 Agricultural to R2 Suburban Residential District consisting of one single-family home and sell the family estate. Property is located in Land Lot 622, District 1, Section 3. Property address is 2725 Marshall Fuller Road, Saint Commission Post 2. My staff has recommended approval. We've had no noted opposition or concerns on this case.
Is the applicant present?
Applicant is present.
If you would please come around, sir. Sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. That would be me.
Yes, sir. Yeah, my name's Richard Butler. And I'm the administrator of the estate and I just need to take my dad's home and put it back residential, take it out agricultural, and to settle the estate.
Yes, sir. Do you have any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions to the applicant? Thank you very much, sir. Oh, if you haven't, would you please sign in on the ledger? Should be there to the right of the lectern. We're going to pause briefly for technical purposes. We'll continue on now. Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns? You can come around now. Hearing none. I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2022-01Z.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Steele and I have a second from Mr. Leggett. All in favor. Motion passes five, zero, and one.
Okay. Next application, 2022Z. I said 2022-22Z. Application by 219 Jet LLC, Yawee Liu, requesting to rezone approximately 29.099 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District and PRD Planned Residential District to R3 Seward Suburban Residential District to develop a subdivision of approximately 34 single-family detached homes. Property is located in Land Lots 542 and 543, District 3, Section 3. The project site is located on the west side of Dallas-Aquamar Highway, south of Stone Wood Creek Drive, Saint Commission Post 1. My staff has recommended approval with 10 printed stipulations.
Is the applicant present? If you please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Yes, my name is Jerry Johnson. I reside at 31 Westbrook Drive. I'm here on behalf of Perspective Engineering who prepared the zoning plan for our CLAT 219 Jet LLC. As Chris mentioned, we have approximately 29 acres. We're proposing to rezone from R2 and PRD to R3. The development would consist of 34 lots, which would give us a density of about 1.17 units per acre, which is very low considering some of the developments that are around We're also proposing 7.85 acres of buffer area, which is composed of area predominantly the 50-foot strip that goes around the perimeter of the development. Zoning requirements would be 2.91 acres. So we're about 27 percent and I think the zoning requires 10 percent. We have reviewed the staff's recommendations and have reviewed the recommended stipulations for the rezoning if it were to carry forward. We don't object to any of them in their entirety. We would ask that there be one modification to stipulation number three, which requests a 75-foot undisturbed buffer along Dallas-Aquamar Highway. As we understand the code to read, it requires a 75-foot buffer along county roads. This is a state route. However, we're not objecting to providing a buffer. It's just due to the irregular shape of the right-of-way that was recently acquired by Georgia DOT. We would prefer to ask that that buffer be measured from the center line of the road, which would put it approximately 145 feet from the center line of the road, which would allow for their typical section, which appears to be 70 foot from the center line of the road plus 75 foot of buffer. Looks like the irregularities that they acquired during their right-of-way acquisition were probably due to slopes and storm drainage that would need to be put in. And the property owner at the time did not contemplate that there would be additional buffers that would need to be held in reservation when they made that right-of-way sale to the state for the project.
So you're asking for a modification to the third stipulation as it states 75-foot undisturbed buffer along Dallas-Aquamar right-of-way?
Mm-hmm.
And you're wanting to change that to a totality from the center line?
Correct.
Of 140 feet?
145 feet. And the reason for that is when we looked at the DOT plans, their section appears to be 70 feet of right-of-way from the center line, but in sections like this where they need additional area for slopes, they would go beyond that. And we're just asking that that 75 be applied to that typical 70s, which would add up to 145 feet from the center line.
Okay. We'll come back to that in just a minute. Are there any other comments?
Just related to that same buffer, we have two lots at the front, 33 and 34. There are some state waters there. And in consideration for protecting those natural resources, we'd like to ask if they could allow us to put a single residential drive to serve those two lots within that 75-foot buffer. But we would keep all other improvements in impervious areas outside of that buffer.
Can you show us on the map? I don't know if you... Is there a way to show the locations of those?
Is it showing... Okay, so...
We switch to the...
You want to switch to the...
Yeah, switch to the cycle.
There you go. Okay, thank you. So if you can see the screen, hopefully I can see it. Okay, I see the mouse moving. So we're talking about these two lots, 33 and 34. And right here are the buffers for the state waters that we've located. The 75-foot buffer would come across here and cross over these buffers. So we still need to be able to access these lots without having to come in off the state route. And the thought is that we would run one drive, one common drive for both of these lots, just outside this impervious buffer, and then turn it in back here and then keep the rest of the improvements on the lots outside of the 75-foot buffer or the buffer that would be 145 foot from the center line of Dallas-Aquamar Highway.
So the change of the buffer would then allow you to have room to do that and maintain the distance from the state waters that you need to maintain?
Changing the buffer would not. It would still overlap existing impervious buffers that are in place for the state waters.
So you would need a variance on the buffer of the state waters?
I guess that's what it would be. No, if we stayed outside of the undisturbed buffer along Dallas-Aquamar Highway, yes, we would need a variance to go through those buffers. But in those variance processes, they always ask us to consider other alternatives where we would not impact the environment or could have less impact on the environment. And if we're going to ask for a variance on a buffer, you know, we thought we would ask for one that was not going to have... Could not have the potential to have detrimental impacts on a natural resource.
Mr. Robinson, would that then require a separate hearing in front of the Board of
In regard to the 75-foot buffer that is stipulated on number three along the frontage of Dallas-Aquamar Highway, Mr. Johnson is correct in the actual zoning ordinance, it says from a county road. Of course, that's also state Route 92. Therefore, there's not a buffer requirement along the frontage on the state route without this stipulation. So there wouldn't be a variance from the zoning ordinance.
We're just modifying the stipulation.
It would just be a modification on the stip number three.
If the Planning Commission chose to do so.
That's correct.
And with regard to the driveway request?
That would need to be a part of that.
Okay.
Recommendation.
Any further comments?
That's all I have. I'd like to reserve any other time in case there's any questions or concerns.
Okay. If you would please remain in place, we'll go through any questions from Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners. So first, Planning Commission.
Yeah, I'll start. I have a question or a comment. On that 33-34, I'm not sure you needed a variance. You could put an easement on 34 to access 33 and share a common driveway.
That's right. But the 75-foot buffer that would be in place because of the proposed stipulation would overlap that area.
Is your boundary there on 34, does it account for that buffer? Or that is the...
No, that 34 only shows the building setbacks. We were made aware of the buffer with these requested zoning stipulations.
So that boundary on the south side of 34 is the right-of-way for state Route 92?
That's correct.
Any more questions to the applicant?
I have a few questions.
Sure.
Jerry, wanting to find out the square footage of the homes. Do you have that?
I know we will meet the minimum and I believe that's 1,800, but I think the owner plans to build something in the 2,200 to 2,500 range and above.
Okay, and I would imagine three, four, and five bedrooms?
I think they're going to be...
I guess you got it, yeah.
Probably three, four, four-bedroom.
Okay. And do you have any idea of the price point?
We don't right now. The market condition's very hard to predict. And I think it's going to be something comparable to what's in the area.
The Stone Creek Village or what's next to it, probably similar?
Yeah, I mean, I would expect that, I mean, that a house in this, you know, square footage would probably be 350 or higher.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
I have a question. You're not planning on any of these being rentals, are you?
I think the owner does plan on there being some rentals, yes. Maybe as many as 33.
33 percent?
Yeah, 33 of the 34. The owner does plan to reside there on the property.
Any further questions from the Planning Commission? I'm going to go to the Board of Education. Mr. Wick, do you have any questions or comments?
I do have some comments. Just wanted to let everyone know that the 34 anticipated single-family attached dwellings would put approximately, based upon our per demographic percentages, 22 additional students inside of our school systems. And that breaks down to 11 to Russell currently, five to our East Paulding Middle School campus. Again, that is current boundary. And then that would be six to the Paulding High School campus, which is a campus that has already somewhat overpopulated.
What was the apartment number again? Thank you very much. Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Jerry, just make sure... I'd like to get with you after, while you could more draw this on this layout, just make sure I'm thinking what you're saying is correct, just because I don't want to assume. Me and Scott have been getting the crayons out, but I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. So if you can, maybe after the meeting, just kind of do it so we can look at it and make sure we know what you're talking about besides just, you know...
Sure.
Drawing it up there.
Sure, I understand.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners?
I do. How did you calculate your numbers, Mr. Wick? Because back when I was in the school system, we figured 2.5 students per household.
So we contracted with a third-party company, Davis Demographics, and they have done a demographic survey for projections and future forecasting, and that's based upon a student yield factor. And so we have this process as we go through there. And each one of the grade levels has got its own certain percentage of anticipated, and that's off of previous year's history. So we did a 10-year history and then we did a five-year history.
It seems pretty low to me.
Currently, I believe it's 0.635 percent per household.
Thank you.
So no further questions from the Board of Commissioners? Any other questions from Planning Commission?
Let's go back to the buffer on number three for a second. What would be the minimum that you need? So you said you... 140 feet from the center line? But you have a varying right-of-way.
Yeah, what... All we're proposing is just to make it 145 foot from the center line, just as if they were running a 140-foot right-of-way through there, 70 foot on each side. That would be 70 plus the 40 to 75 that they're asking for. So we're willing to give them that 145 from the center line, just like it would normally be in a typical section. They've acquired extra space there that juts out for slopes and storm drainage. So that area would normally, you know, not be developed anyway.
And is that proposed, you giving it to the Georgia DOT, or is that...
This is after DOT has acquired...
Okay.
This project, as I understand, if it's not already been left for construction, it's very soon to be. I mean, it's something that they're going to be doing very soon.
It's just an odd shape for right-of-way.
Yeah, it's just because of the slopes that they need to get to support the roadway
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I will continue on now. Is there anybody else here wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none. Is there anyone that may wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. At this time, I'd ask Planning Commission to consider making a motion for application And keep in mind, the request, there's 10 listed stipulations. There've been a request to modify the third stipulation to state 145 feet of buffer to be calculated from center line of Dallas-Aquamar Highway. And then a consideration for allowance of a driveway to run in that area over to the main drive-in off of Dallas-Aquamar. If I'm stating that wrong, please feel free to correct me, but I'm just trying to put it out there. I don't make the motions, but I want everybody to be prepared for what they might need to consider making. So this time, I'll entertain a motion. Is there a motion to be made on this application?
Make a motion for denial.
I have a motion to deny by Mr. Leggett. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a second from Mr. Henson. All in favor of denial? All opposed? And I'm sorry, Ms. Fitzgerald, I didn't catch which... Were you in favor of denial? Yes, okay. So the motion passes two deny, four, one, and one. Now, this will be... This application will still be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners at tonight's meeting. I believe that there was some request to be discussed after the meeting, and y'all can work out the details at that point. Anything further I need to add to that? Mr. Phillips, thank you very much. Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Next application, 2022-23Z, application by Hakamal Singh Grewal, requesting to rezone four parcels totaling approximately 39.75 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District and B1 General Business District to B2 Highway Business District for the construction of a gas distribution retail center. Property is located in Land Lots 968, 969, District 2, Section 3. It's located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Hiram Douglasville Highway, also known as state Route 92. And Bill Caruth Parkway, Saint Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval with seven printed stipulations. Applicant is present, and I think we just had a couple questions, you know, questions of curiosity on this one.
Okay. And you are the applicant, sir?
Good afternoon, sir. My name is Amman Deep Singh. I'm the partner of the applicant. The name that is used, actually, we both are partners in the project.
That's Mr. Grewal?
Yes, sir. He's present here, too.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
If you would please... Yes, sir, thank you. If you would, have you signed in already?
Yes, sir, I did.
If you will, please make your presentation.
Yes, sir. Actually, we want to develop this site as a gas station convenience store with the food court in there. And this is a prime corner. I guess it's very well-suited for the gas station purpose, and that's our intention
Are you familiar with the seven-listed stipulation that has been recommended by staff?
We have met all the requirements that...
You've met the requirements for the application. They've added seven stipulations. I want to make sure that you're familiar with them before we move forward.
I sent an email on Friday or last week. This is some of the things that we're asking that you agree to. Yes, sir. We are... Sure.
All right, sir. Thank you very much for that. What I'm going to do now is ask you to remain at the lectern and we'll ask questions from the Planning Commission. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So it looks like you're setting up an island for fueling for larger trucks. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It is a part of project. It's not going to be parking, but it's a refueling station.
Okay. So you have approximately 30 or so larger parking spaces? Is that for tractor-trailers?
Yeah, if the fueling station, it's going to be three-lane. So if they require for the food and all that stops, that's going to be there.
Any overnight parking?
No, sir. It's not going to rent it out. As the planning of other retail, suit-to-build types is going to be there, so we don't want any trucks involved in there.
Okay, thank you.
Ann, is there a way you can blow that up to be able to be... How about that? Thank you. Just wanted to see which each of these buildings are going to be. So I see the... I see your gas station, and the other buildings are going to be retail?
It's going to be for the retail, yes, ma'am.
And how many retail buildings do you plan on having?
We are in, you know, initial project development, so it's going to be mostly the restaurant type of retail and, I mean, suit-to-build. I mean, if someone comes and tries to build some retail, it's going to be purely retail.
Okay.
And how many gas pumps do you anticipate?
Around 16 MPDs.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
On the far left, what type of buildings are discounted, like your lips and the underneath?
It's going to be truck filling lanes. It's gonna be three MPDs there, and they're gonna fill it up and they're gonna leave the property. Because trucking... Cause trucking uh requires little bit more space to turn, so that's why we just give estimated that it's easier to move.
Did that answer your question, sir?
Uh, must have been sort of something earlier. I didn't think there were gonna be any trucks.
Well, it's the the plan right here shows uh lanes for tractor trailers to be able to fill up, and then the spaces back behind that and to the south of it, if you're looking at the plan right now, would be parking areas so that if they determine they're gonna stay and eat in a restaurant that they can. That's the presentation that was made. Yes, sir. Are there any other questions from the Board of Commissioners?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, I wanted to ask if there are any controls in place for this area, because there are neighborhoods not too far from there, and there's a school close to there and that kind of thing. So uh, is there any kind of control on what kind of retail shops can go in? For instance, we all know there's a difference between a place where a truck can get gas and a truck stop. Okay, so uh, like vape shops, porn stuff, things like that. Is that alcohol gonna be sold here? I mean, what what all is going to be, is anything gonna be excluded from the retail possibilities here?
The way that this is read to me, and I will defer to staff and Mr. Robinson, if you want to chime in on that, but the way that it reads to me is they would be eligible to engage in all businesses listed under the zoning category that they're locating in, but I will defer to Chris on any kind of prohibition against any certain activities.
Uh, with this application, there's, at this time, uh, it would allow any permitted use in the B two zoning district, which would include uh a variety of things from banking to the convenience store, building material garden supplies, bowling, exterminating electronics, electronic vehicles charging, daycare, I mean, that dry cleaning, laundry services, fitness, recreational sports centers, florists, food services, drinking places, and that would exclude bars, uh furniture and home furnishing stores, gasoline stations, uh general automotive repair, general merchandise retailers, gift and souvenir near retail retailers, uh grocery convenience retailers, hair, nail, skin care, tanning salons, health and personal care retailers, hospitals excluding psychiatric or substance abuse, hotels, motels, uh kidney dialysis center, local messengers and local delivery centers, miscellaneous store retailers, uh motion picture sound recording, uh motion picture theaters, motor vehicle and parts distillers, uh museum, historic sites, newspaper publishers, office supplies, office of real estate agents, brokers, parcel delivery lockers, parking lots and garages that would be associated with a business, and personal and household goods, repair, pet supply stores, pet care, uh photo finishing. I can go on.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going to stop you there.
Thank you.
Because it's not only the list that is given under your B two classification for the property, it's all the lesser categories of business as well that's allowed. Is that correct?
That, since our ordinance has changed with the Unified Development Ordinance, it does not pull back to the B one district what's allowed or open on districts.
I wanted a clarification there.
Yes.
So what is listed under your B two? All those lit near businesses?
These, these are opportunities. There is uh, you know, tobacco, electronic cigarette stores. Uh, there's, you know, at this time, there's no beer and wine stores. I mean, they could sell beer and wine at the convenience store or grocery store.
As in package sales?
Correct.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, but it made me think of one more. How about uh COAM machines? Would they be allowed, or COAMS, the coin operated amusement machines which are gambling? Um, is that allowed here or not?
Going from my memory, COAM is a coin operated amusement machine. There's generally not a prohibition as long as you have a properly issued state license for that kind of.
Are you planning to annex it into the city of Hiram?
No, sir.
How many charging stations do you have?
Uh, we are planning, we are trying to make it futuristic gas station, like which will be having, you know, electronically like E Vs and all that involved in it. And most of the stuff, this project is is big, so it's not gonna be in one phase. It will be in two phases. The trucking is also our second phase uh development. The first phase will be a convenience store with the food courts and uh the filling station, gas filling station. But if requirements will be there, then we just want to add. And another, the retail, we are saying, we are more interested if we'll get this permission, we want to bring more food franchises like Mac Ds or, you know, X Y Z that involves more towards the community around the property.
A large restaurant will be appreciated.
Is this gonna be twenty-four hour operation?
It will be, yes, sir.
How are you gonna restrict overnight parking, then?
Uh, mostly, like, we will be on on the parking side, you know, we can, I mean, nowadays it's easy, cause uh we have cameras in, we can put cameras in place, and uh in the whole operation, it's gonna be, a lot of employment will be included in this, and one will be supervision. So I will, we we want and some manager to be managing everything on the property, and will not allow the trucking for overnight, cause we are not allowing more than, that's what we are thinking. But that's another, uh, that's a second phase, that what I'm saying. Uh, if trucking uh requires uh refilling, maybe two hours max that we gonna put a sign there, or we will, I mean, we don't want that the whole parking should be, you know, covered with the trucks all night. So we want they come and go. So that's what I mean our purpose is. And we will implement that uh by, you know, putting a security guard or, you know, some supervision on that.
Because this zoning does um implement a parking lot, per se, um, and then again, uh, Mr. Henson mentioned uh the overnight parking, would you be fine with putting a stipulation in there saying that no parking lot and no over overnight?
Yes, ma'am. We don't want, I mean, we, I don't wanna reduce my own business, putting more trucks in there, so that they don't stop here, they'll go somewhere else. So if there will be less trucks, it's easier for the ones who want to refuel it. So we always, I mean, if I I'm running a gas station right now, so my always, I want to keep the flow going on, you know, if car comes and go. That brings more business than if car stays there for like thirty minutes. It's blocking a pump. So we don't want that kind of business. All we want is, it will be twenty-four hour. It will be under supervision, and we would, we will not allow any anybody to stay there more than two hours.
Maybe you said so earlier and I didn't catch it, but how many parking spaces for large trucks are you gonna have?
Uh, that's uh the question from.
Eighty.
Eighty?
Yeah.
Eighty?
Eighteen or eight?
It looks like uh twenty-five here.
So the number of tractor trailer trucks that can park at any given time, did I hear you right? And if you want to speak, please come to the lectern and give us your name and sign in. But I want to make sure we're hearing correctly.
Good afternoon. I am William Krebs with Land Works Associates. Uh, we were the planners and engineers of the project. Um, this is gonna be a project that will unfold over a certain amount of time. As the owner has stated, uh, it will be built in phases. So initially, probably start out with twenty to thirty of the truck parking on the site, depending on the circulation, the flow of traffic, the volume that is experienced on the property. Uh, so it would be expandable, uh, depending on the use. But as he's defined, uh, that use will be something that is based on the flow of what is the need in the area.
In this current zoning, you're asking for thirty-nine acres. In this particular layout you've shown us, how much area is being used there in that particular?
Nine acres.
Okay. So you have an additional thirty acres that would be B two?
Depending on what the market draws in that area, and once again, it's experimental. Um, the infrastructure is new. Uh, we've worked with the G dot folks pretty closely. We've monitored what their anticipated flow of traffic is. We've been careful to uh match in with the existing flow of traffic, the infrastructure that's out there. So over time, it's gonna evolve. They're not gonna be able to develop the entire thirty-nine acres at one time, but depending on the needs, then they would expand something that would be similar to what's been uh illustrated today.
Okay. So are there any other questions to the applicant or the presentation at this time? Planning Commission?
I have another question. I'm sorry.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, do you operate a gas station now or?
Yes, ma'am.
Convenience store? Do you have COAMS and uh vapes and those kind of things in those stores?
We have a COAMS, yes.
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, we have Georgia Lottery and COAM.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Planning Commission? Hearing none, you can take your seat at this time. Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion with regard to Application twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three Z. There has been one uh discussion point about adding an eighth stipulation. Uh, as to state, no overnight parking would be allowed. Did I capture that correctly? Okay. So if you wish to make a motion, would you do so with the consideration of the seven listed stipulations plus the added stip?
Make a motion that we approve it with the seven listed stipulations and adding the eighth with no overnight parking on the premises.
I have a motion from Mr. Henson with the seven listed stipulations, adding the eighth as discussed. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second from Ms. Seaver. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. Again, this will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting tonight at six o'clock. Applicant must be present for it to be considered. Anyone with any interest should be present also. Mr. Robinson?
Excuse me. Next application. Next application, twenty twenty-two oh four S U P, application by Michael Whitman, Whitman Properties LLC, requesting a special use permit to construct a parking lot for storage, for a storage facility of large trucks. Property is located in land lot nineteen, District two, Section three. It's located on the south side of Industrial Boulevard North, west of Dallas Akworth Highway. It is in Commission Post four. Uh, staff is recommended approval with four stipulations, and this, just as a note, this uh application is two point five acres, and it's in addition to an existing park that's already under construction and close to approval or uh operation. And applicant is present.
If you would, please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My name is Michael Whitman. I own the piece of property adjacent to the one I'm going to purchase. I was going to attach it to the existing. Uh, I currently have my plumbing office and two parking lots on the property. I was going to add an additional uh two point five acres, which by the time it's cut and filled is only gonna be twenty or thirty spots. I, the engineers drew it out of twenty-two spots additional to the existing. The entrance is gonna be through my existing entrance on uh Industrial Boulevard. The property is surrounded by industrial, the OT storage.
So you're proposing to do industrial inside an industrial park? Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Hearing none. Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Whitman. If you will take your seat, we'll see if anybody else wants to speak. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of, one question, Mr. Whitman, there's four stipulations. Have you had a chance to read those, review them?
I did.
And you're agreeable to those?
The one I have, you know, an issue with is the traffic study. I've already done two traffic studies in fifteen months of the same road. Everyone's five thousand dollars. I'm getting asked to do another traffic study, and it's just a burden. And every traffic study comes back that everything's fine.
What's the most recent study that you had conducted?
The last one was February twenty twenty-two.
Let us ask a question. Um, Mr. Jones, is that a recent enough study that it can be acceptable to the Department of Transportation for the purposes of this application?
Good afternoon. Uh, what I would say, those studies were done for waivers, for Development Waiver Review Committee for waivers. Obviously, I think these were for left and right turn lanes going into the site. So typically, we do ask for updated studies when you're adding more area to a development.
That is common practice with standards, okay? Then that would remain as a stipulation more than likely, Mr. Whitman.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion from the Planning Commission regarding Application twenty twenty-two dash zero four.
Make a motion to approve with the four listed stipulations.
I have a motion from Mr. Leggett to approve with the four listed stipulations. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second from Mr. Steele. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. And again, it will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners. You'll need to be present for it to be considered. Mr. Robinson, if you would. Sorry, wrestling with some paper here.
Okay, next application, twenty twenty-two oh five S U P, application by Whitaker Investments LLC, Whitaker W. Smith, requesting a special use permit for the purposes of developing a gravel truck, trailer, and container storage facility. Property is located in land lot six oh five, six twenty, District two, Section three. It's on the northeast corner of the intersection of Thompson Road and Coppermine Road. It's in Commission Post three. Staff is recommended approval with thirteen uh printed stipulations, and we've had uh some concerns from citizens on this one. We've provided that information to you regarding uh some of their concerns, and also uh the applicant has suggested some modifications and changes to some of the staff's stipulations.
Yes, sir, if you would, please.
Yes, uh, I'm Whit Smith, uh, or Whitaker Smith, and uh, we are um proposing a uh outdoor storage facility for the, uh, when we first made application, we were unsure as to outdoor storage facility for the, uh, when we first made application, we were unsure as to what the future used to be. And it's, um, and we also, when we first started the project, uh, we didn't, at that time, we didn't, uh, have to have the special use permit. And so it kind of evolved during that timeframe. But it's a, we're proposing a facility to, uh, store shipping containers that interact with the intermodal, um, station in Ostel. And, um, it'll be a private facility, not open to the public, that, uh, a, a single user will store containers, um, on-site and interact with the intermodal to deliver inventory and supplies and things like that. So I, I guess I would, uh, we gave our, uh, we gave our comments on staff's recommendation of the approval, uh, to LEA yesterday. And I would, we could, I could, you know, I know you all have seen those, so I would be more than happy to answer any questions or kind of get our team to answer any questions.
If you would like to, or actually, I would just like you to go over your concerns with stipulation, I believe it is number nine and ten, um, that are listed there. Let me, and then there was a deletion of, oh, and eleven, um, a deletion of eleven, and then further amending to thirteen. Now, I'm looking at a redlined or a red edited section. That is from you, correct?
Yes, sir. Uh, so number nine is, um, the, the buffer per code is a little less, uh, but we are agreeable to, um, having an undisturbed buffer on, on Thompson and Coppermine Road, um, up front, in front of the development. Cause they're, uh, they're heavily wooded, there's, uh, mature pine trees all the way around. And, um, we can appreciate, uh, leaving that buffer, um, up front, but we didn't want, uh, the way it was worded. We, we wanted it to be, you know, natural and not, you know, plant. I, I think that was probably maybe getting up in the weeds a little bit, um, on, and, but the wording of it was, we're, we're fine with the buffer. But we, and we're going to make every effort and plan to keep it natural as it exists for that seventy-five feet. Um, and then number ten, um, staff recommended, uh, stacking containers, uh, three-high. And, um, my, our comments on that are that the way they interact with the intermodal is that they come in pairs. And so they, they come off the train in two and they go back on the train in two is the way, and, and so it's, it's easier, it's safer to stack them with four is the point to taking them apart. And, um, so we thought that maybe in lieu of saying a number of units, that we could ma- suggest a footage, uh, high that underneath the pine trees. And so I, I, you know, a, a standard, uh, elevation height in most, in a lot of zoning categories, zoning categories is thirty-five feet. So we, we, um, we suggested or asked for thirty-five feet. Um, number, stipulation number eleven, um, was, I don't have the original comment by staff, but it was hours of operation.
Number eleven says owner developer agrees to the hours of operation between nine AM and nine PM, Monday through Friday.
Yes, sir. So the, it, the intermodal station in Ostel is twenty-four hours a day. This site will not be twenty-four hours a day per se, but they do need to be able to access the site to deli- it's, it's coming on a truck from two-seventy-eight to Bill Caruth to Thompson Road. And so ninety-five percent of the activity at the intermodal is during those normal business hours. But on occasion, the, there will be, um, they will, they will need to have access to the site so that you don't have trucks on the road waiting to get in or those types of things. And so I don't know, you know, it's, it's not a public, um, it's not a business that's open for the public where there'll be, you know, people coming and, um, coming in, you know, trying to do business at the site. But they will be, the, the tenant will be expected to access the site, you know, on occasion, but it won't be, um, as frequent as normal business hours. And so I didn't know, or my, my thought is it would, it would be hard to say, you know, we don't want a line of trucks waiting to get in at nine AM. That, that would be more detrimental to traffic patterns. Um, so that was why we asked for that deletion.
Okay.
Going back to number ten, you want to stack them thirty feet high, thirty-five feet high. How many can you stack in thirty-five feet?
Four. Yes, sir.
How many, that's the max?
Yes, sir.
And that is because they come in double-stack pairs?
Correct. On a train, um, they're, they come in double-stack pairs. And so that, they, you know, you take them off two at a time is, is the way it's been explained to me.
What are you anticipating number, quantity on the site? Four high by how many stacks?
It's hard to say, it'll vary seasonally, um, but, uh,
Give me max.
What's that?
Give me max.
I don't have a max, we can get a number today if that's helpful.
Um, it's, it's, it's hard to say how many, I mean, I, I would think, I think that the traffic, uh, is twenty to thirty trucks a day is what I've been told. Um, co- on, on average, um, you know, during the week. Um, it's, at different times of the day, not all at one time.
Right, but you're asking for, you're asking for a special use permit on nineteen acres. So are you planning on covering the entire nineteen acres? Outside of the?
Not, not with containers, but I mean, it, it'll be, it's this, it was a, uh, I don't, I'm not planning on covering with the, the whole thing, but it's just, it's going to be great, it's going to be developed as such. It, it, that makes sense. I mean, it's, it's, you know, on the site plan, it's, it's relatively flat. And it'll be, you know, a storage yard like the one, um, next to it on the right, right there. Behind, uh, CSI.
Yeah, I mean, the site plan shows the entire area as a storage yard.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if I maximize my storage area, how many can I put in there?
I'll, I can get you that number, but I don't have it.
Will this be a paved area or gravel area?
We, uh, we would pref- we, it's vital for gravel, um, for the repair of the, I mean, when you have equipment moving in and it's, and it's also consistent with the neighboring area, including the county property, uh, below. But all the sites around there are gravel and it's easier to maintain the property that way and have it nice and, you know, better maintained because if you have the weight of those, you know, with, with inventory in it, it'll, it would crack the concrete.
You're saying that the nine AM to nine PM is too restrictive. What hours do you feel would be less restrictive?
Twenty-four hours, if it, if I may speak.
Sure. Yep. This is, uh, Jenna Lee. She is a, uh, zoning attorney with, uh, with our capital partners that, uh, knows a little bit more.
If you would please sign in.
Sure. So, good afternoon, I'm Jenna Lee. Twenty-four hours is critical to the operations as Whit mentioned because the property is going to be interacting with the intermodal facility. It's, it's critical to the success of this facility to also be able to accommodate pickup, drop-off when, when it's a necessity, um, given its interaction with the Ostel intermodal facility. And Whit mentioned that ninety-five percent of the operations will be between customary business hours, like the eight to five. And we have data, um, you know, that, that shows that spread, but there are those few on non, um, business hours wh- where the, uh, user would need to have access to the site. And, um, you know, that, the, ideally, we would like to have that flexibility for twenty-four-seven so that as Whit said, we don't have trucks queuing in the public right-of-way, trying to, you know, showing up at six AM, six AM, but waiting for the gate to unlock at seven AM. So, um, again, we, we anticipate the vast, vast majority occur between eight and five. And not only that, Monday to Friday, Saturday, Sunday is, is not a peak, um, operational time for the user.
So you wouldn't be operating a facility on Saturday and Sunday? You say it's not peak, but?
Not peak, but, exactly. The but is important that if, you know, if you have a, a truck coming out of the Ostel facility that needs to, to access the site, we need to have that flexibility to give them access to the site.
So it's going to be twenty-four-seven?
Yes.
You say office can be still there?
Yes, well, the proposal, and I believe one of the stipulations, is that we provide an office facility with restrooms. And, and we, we proposed an amendment that's again in the, the weeds, nitty-gritty here in the, the language of the stipulation. But, um, I think the original conditions had construct and we said provide because, you know, typically, it would be a, some type of, um, modular facility that meets the minimum code requirements, of course, in any design, um, standards. Oh, in the, the administrative facility? Um, I don't know a firm number, but I can, I can get that number two today. Oh, you do? Good. Whit's going to answer that.
Uh, the facility is going to employ, uh, twenty to twenty-five people, uh, per estimates from the tenant, from the, um, and they, they won't be, they'll be in the yard, not necessarily in an office. They won't be office workers, but they will be drivers handling equipment and those types of things. And the office will be provided for them to use the restroom, um, take a break, and also store, um, equipment for, um, security and, um, and, and, you know, other mo- modems and things like that.
So you would not necessarily have someone there at a twenty-four-hour facility working there as a supervisor?
Um,
I can address that one too.
I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, understand?
Yeah, yeah.
Will it be manned twenty-four-hour and under management during?
We would have security twenty-four-sevens, certainly. I don't think that we would expect to have a crew on-site of twenty-five people twenty-four-seven, but there would always be security and, you know, a site manager on-site.
Can we go back to the trips per day? Kind of ties it to how much, you know, back to my question.
Yeah, and so, I mean, it's hard, I, it's hard to show a la- like, you know, because they're big and you're swinging them around. It's not like you're stacking, you know, jamming them in there, but I don't have a ti- that's, so it's hard to compute. I don't have, and I, I, I'm sorry, I'm not more prepared, but that, the, the reason for that is so that you can access them and then lift them back up. And I mean, it will be, uh, you know, a, a big number for, you know, I'm not.
Well, that, and that's where I'm going, looking at, again, looking at nineteen acres, your site plan. You know, you had a seventy-five-foot undisturbed buffer and you got.
Well, so that site plan doesn't reflect the seventy-five.
Okay. So you're, so your fencing and everything will move back.
Yes.
But your site's still going to be usable area of seventeen acres.
No, it'll be less. If, uh, my, ah, can engineer answer that?
Sure.
Okay.
Nineteen acres, don't lose about two and a half acres.
Okay.
See, you, you need to sign in, Michael.
And the pond will take up an acre, acre and a half. By the time you do all that, you probably will have about fifteen acres.
Okay.
And so, and ha- and half, and a lot of the space will be used for trucks to turn around and drop it off, so it's, you know, it's moving around on-site.
And also, you and I had discussed that, uh, there will be an area there for the bill of lightings to be.
Yes.
For the fire inspectors to be able to come in and, uh, check, make sure there's no hazardous or flammable materials that's not supposed to be on property.
Correct, absolutely. And that would be in that office space. So this is Michael forlaw with, uh, he's a, he's drew the plan and can answer.
How much usable acreage would you have once the seventy-five-foot buffer is attained?
Fifteen acres.
And the reason we use the microphone is we're also streaming this, so there are people who may not hear you with the microphone.
He, he said fifteen acres, sorry.
Okay. Going back to the stipulations, we covered up to eleven. There is also a thirteenth where it says owner developer agrees to provide an office with restroom facilities. So that was also one of the areas that you had some red-letter edits in there. I don't know that we need to cover it any further than that. Uh, but I do know that we've had, and before we go into asking for anyone else to speak on behalf of or in opposition, Mr. Robinson, you had indicated that you had had a couple of comments, uh, from residential population in this area that had some concerns. I would like to just go ahead and note those at the outset.
Yes, and, uh, the applicant has agreed to some of the, uh, items that were brought to our attention by the citizens in that area, that no hazardous containers would be on the site. Uh, they were, uh, that there would be a shielded box security lighting.
Okay.
And that instead of, they asked for a fifty-foot buffer, but they've agreed to seventy-five along the front. That's, uh, natural, undisturbed is fine. Four, they're asking, uh, that they worried about the traffic and said it probably needed to be four lanes from Thompson Road to the, to a new red light on Bill Caruth. And they would, uh, the, the functioning red light, uh, traffic was one of their biggest concerns. And that it would just be daylight on, hours only for noise control. That was just some of the questions from the neighbors to the, to the, to the east.
Is there anything else you would like to add until we, if we're going to open up questions? I know it seems like we've been doing that already, but
Sure.
Anything further you wish to add to your presentation?
Um, I, 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 I don't think so.
So at this time, Planning Commission, I know we've already had some interaction. Are there any other questions with regard to the application that you may have at this time?
I, I guess my question would be, would you agree to no hazardous containers on-site?
Absolutely.
Um, got the buffers, the lanes, uh, the, the lights to be boxed, boxed lights.
I believe that is actually a development regulation requirement.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's already in the code.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Chairman Carmichael?
Chris mentioned residents on, none of the maps in our material or on the screen, uh, show any residents. So I'd be interested in that and, uh, you know, any other thing that, that might, uh, be of a concern to, to neighbors or residents, how close they are?
Mr. Robinson, I'm going to do something I norm- don't normally do and just turn it completely over to you. Go ahead.
Okay. The, the neighbors that had these questions, it's most of the community, if you go back to the east along, uh, Coppermine Road and you get back over to, not, not quite over to the Walmart area, but there's, uh, a lot of families that's been there for generations. That if you look and you kind of see the blue that is adjacent to the properties in question to the right. If you can continue on to the east and back north, you run into a lot of these older, uh, homes and neighborhoods there.
So what is that, Chris, half a mile or?
Could be anywhere from half a mile to a little bit less than half a mile. And that's a, that route from, uh, Coppermine Road to Thompson Road to Bill Caruth is the normal, their normal traffic route.
No churches around?
I don't recall any churches except for the one that will be across Bill Caruth. Full Turn is going to develop a church across from Thompson Road.
To this particular site, it actually appears that they would be in competition with Gray's, uh, Greystone subdivision as far as distance to a residential population.
That's correct.
But if you go back toward Hiram along Coppermine Road, uh, where it then becomes CW Sims at Watts Road, that's where the m- majority of the older homes and generational population lives.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
In response to that? That we, as part of this proposal, our understanding is that traffic, truck traffic and container traffic would go up Thompson to two-seventy-eight. It would not travel down Coppermine Road.
You mean up Thompson to Bill Caruth to two-seventy-eight?
Yes, yes, excuse me, yes.
Yeah, cause if you went the other way, it would be a suicide mission. It's just not built for that.
Right. Right. I just wanted to stress that we're not taking trucks, you know, in the direction of, um, neighborhoods.
All right. Are there any other questions from the board of commissioners? Ms. Galloway?
I just wanted to ask, uh, the DOT, George, is there a plan to put in a traffic light there already or not? Is that part of our, um, ongoing development of that corridor?
No, at this time, there's not a plan to put in a traffic light, um, traffic signals, um, basically before those go in, you look at the warrants to see if they're warranted. At this point in time, it hasn't satisfied the warrants for a traffic signal at Thompson Road and two seventy-eight, um, you know, again, as traffic changes, as the county grows, we always look at those things to see if they do meet warrants at a certain point in time, but at this point, no, there's not. One thing I would like to add, the county does have a, um, a truck route policy, um, we adopted that a couple of years ago with an update, and so trucks, um, unless they're going to a destination or to their, um, you know, yard or freight yard or whatever, they're supposed to take the nearest truck routes to go, um, through the county.
Any further questions from the board of commissioners?
Is there a representative there?
So, this'll, this'll be the, the, uh, developed and, um, and the, the tenant is, there's several tenants that are, that interact with the intermodal that have this business model, and that's yet to be determined which one will be the tenant.
So, I mean, so we're asking questions as far as how operations is gonna be, but then we don't know who the tenant is.
Correct.
We really don't know who we'd be dealing and working with in the future, correct?
Uh, as far as a user, well, so, uh, but Altera Industrial Development is, uh, helping with, and, and will be the landlord for the, uh, for the tenant, which, which, and the tenant is a logistics company that interacts with, uh, with the intermodal, but that hasn't been finalized.
And, and to the extent it's helpful, I'm Altera's local council, and so they'll be the long-term landlord on this property, and you'd be interacting with, with us, the, with Altera as the landlord, understanding that a future tenant will be decided, hopefully in the next few weeks.
How many, um, truck spaces, parking spaces, billable is fifteen acres again? Or nineteen? Y'all have it laid out?
We're, we're not, so, this is, we're not planning to park trucks on the property, but, uh, um, I think the general rule of thumb is, yeah.
What, what's that?
Twenty, twenty an acre, per, twenty a usable acre, um, so that would be on a fifteen acres, that'd be three hundred trucks.
So has it been a traffic study done, though?
Well, it's required in, in the stipulation, and we have agreed to it.
All right, one, one more thing, then, as far as the acre, how much of an acre, George, is required for the acres on the county road?
And I don't think you have your mic on, or the battery's dead, one or the other.
Again, coming off the county road, I think you'd look at the, the trucks that are using it, you'd want them to, uh, basically be able to have their back wheels, um, on concrete or asphalt, however it would be, so you'd take that into account, you'd try to design it to accommodate at least one truck, being able to fit all their wheels before they pull out onto the paved county road.
Can I piggyback off that question? Sure. Commissioner Stover asked about the parking spaces, you said, approximately twenty per fifteen, or per acre, fifteen acres, three hundred spaces, stacked and four high, correct? So you're looking at twelve.
So that's, that's not accurate, because you have to have, uh, enough room to, to move, like, they will not be on a trailer, and so they'll be, they, they'll be taking off, the truck will come in, they will be unloaded off the trailer, and then the, just the container will be stacked, and so you still have to be able to get around it and pick them up.
Can I ask a blunt question?
Sure.
I don't mean to be rude.
That's fine.
As an engineer myself, why is there not a proposed plan? I mean, you guys, do you have one?
Well.
Of how you're gonna lay it out, or what you're gonna do?
We can work on that.
That'll be nice to see for us.
Sure, absolutely, and we can probably provide it, um, it, it was a moving, it was a living organism, uh, when, when the special use requirement came up, we were working towards an LDP with the property under contract before the zoning code was changed in, or, or special use was required.
Okay.
And so, we didn't, we don't have all of that yet, um, which will, because, um, we didn't know what special use we would get, and so we would turn it in with, um, you know, to staff for LDP purposes and all, you know, all of those things.
Okay. It just seems like we have a lot of questions that that would answer.
Sure.
From traffic to the number of units and.
So I do have a question, sir.
Okay.
Um, so the landlord, it was all.
Altera.
Altera.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this their first facility that they've ever run?
No.
They have other facilities?
Yes, they're the largest, uh, industrial, uh, landlord in the nation.
And they do, they do, they do these types of parking lots all over the place?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so on their other parking lots.
Mm-hmm.
How many containers, um, stacked four high do they typically get for, per acre? So we don't know on this site, but in previous sites, I'm sure they have a calculation that they've always done.
Sure.
So what is that?
I just, I just requested that number, I don't have it yet.
Okay, I, um, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I, the answer is honestly, I, I don't know how many, there, you know, there is maxing it out, I mean.
So this is the first site that you've done for them?
Yes, correct.
Understood, okay.
All right, so are there any other questions from the planning commission? Or board of commissioners?
I do have a question, more of an operational question, in reference to offloading the stored containers from the trucks.
Yes, sir.
Or the trailers, is the intention to use remote equipment, or is the intention to install an overhead crane?
It would, uh, it's an extension to you, the intention is to use a, um, uh, industrial forklift, uh, and it fits underneath the containers and, uh, not, not a crane.
Okay, which, which, my next question, Chris, does, if you've got a twenty-four-seven operation, does that conflict with any noise ordinances we may have?
I'll be glad to check the noise ordinance and see, give you a question.
Is that an upgrade for you, Chris?
I, I think we're all kinda fascinated by what type of operation.
Sure.
This will be, and, uh, I've been to the Ostel yards, and we all know how much traffic comes up from Savannah and enters there, and, and, so is this an operation that, uh, is, is initiated because there's overflow needs in Ostel, so we need an additional location for containers to maybe continue on to Chicago or up north, is, uh, because you're not gonna have any trucks there, the truck's just gonna come in and take off these two units, and then truck's gonna leave and maybe go back to Savannah or some other pickup point.
Yes, sir. So there's a, there's, it's, it's a, um, the big, the big picture is Savannah's becoming a bigger port, and the intermodal is a drop-off point from Savannah, and there's a, a large need for storage facilities like this one for the containers so that they can get, you know, product to and from all over the place, I mean, even in Paulding, um, moving, moving things by rail to shipping, and so there is a large need for that, and it's, um, you know, it, the shift from another part of the country's port, we've known they've had some issues over there, and Savannah's demand has increased in the last several years, and so, um, yes, there, and, and many of these containers will be on site and they will be empty until they're filled up and taken to the, taken to the intermodal, or mostly to the intermodal.
So what you're pointing out basically with is, these are containers are more than likely not gonna be here a long time, they'll be moving in and out, back and forth as, as, uh.
Yes, sir.
Over a period of a month, let's say.
Correct, yes, sir.
You're not talking about the things being stored six or eight months?
No, yeah, you're not talking about stacking, yes, sir.
Yeah, I feel like the past is kinda catching up with me here, uh, former chairman Sharon and a whole carload, Scott was with us, went and got a tour of, uh, the Ostel intermodal, because we wanted to see if Hiram, Paulding County would be a potential location to get involved, and even our state delegates, uh, were inquiring about how, uh, Paulding County could, could be another site, so, um, it seemed like finally, you know, three or four years later, the, the need for this site is, is extended.
Sure.
Because our conclusion at that point was, well, they, uh, they really don't need another site.
Well, they, they, they do now, certainly, um, and I mean, I think that there's probably, uh, there's a need in many different areas of Georgia that are drop-off points from the rail.
So, um, question I'd have, too, maybe just help me understand, so, so some, some issues I'd look at as far as, you know, you got nineteen acres of industrial zone property, the benefit, could you explain, maybe help me understand, the benefit for Paulding County to only store containers there, I mean, is there a tax? I mean, or we still just got a vacant property compared to like, say CSI who's next door, who has a two or three million dollar building on it, is paying taxes, I mean, you have road, big trucks, I, I have big trucks, and we pay road taxes.
Sure.
You know, and I, you, you know, I'm just trying to see, so if you got, say, trucks that's sending out of this county, that's tagged somewhere else, paying taxes everywhere else, and they come in here using our infrastructure just to store containers, what is the benefit for Paulding County compared to if there was a, actually job producing, building sitting there, making, manufacturing or something like that?
Um, so I think that's, some of that I can speak to and some of it I might not be able to, but, I mean, there will be jobs provided, um, that are, you know, new jobs that will work at this site and interacting with this site, um, the property taxes will definitely go up once it's bought and developed, so the current tax basis will be raised, I would think significantly, um, and as far as how the county could, um, assess some fees, that would, I, I wouldn't know, you know, uh, uh, certainly possible, um, but, you know, I, that's not my job, I guess, um, um, but I, I mean, I could see that happening in, in having, you know, they're gonna pay inventory tax and business license tax and property taxes, and, um, they'll be substantially more than what the property's producing now.
Well, uh, the heavy equipment that's used to, uh, move the trailers, would that be, uh, tagged here in Paulding and taxed here in Paulding?
Yes, ma'am.
And not some other remote location?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that, that would be one, one thing, um, I, I appreciate how much you guys have gone out of your way to try to work with us and meet our concerns, uh, not, not everybody, uh, will be thrilled, no matter what you do.
Sure.
Um, but I'm happy to, um, see you guys looking at this and appreciate the wider buffer, um, and then you have a fence in your plan, it's not in the stipulations, but it's in the plan, so if it's approved, that would be required, I assume, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
I mean, so, well, my response is, there's many things, like, this was an application for a special use, and we're still gonna adhere to the zoning code, which it requires a fence and requires a gate and all of those things, and lighting and all, and there's lots of good stuff in there that will ensure that we'll do a quality development.
I'm certain by nature of the operation, you would want a secured access.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, just to follow up on Commissioner Dunn's question about the nose or, the noise ordinance, um, we have a, a noise ordinance that prohibits certain noises as a general category, those are called a nuisance under state law and county ordinance, and then we have other sections of the noise ordinance that prohibit specific types of noises. There is not a specific type of noise that would emit from this particular facility that is covered by any specific section of the noise ordinance, so therefore the general rule would apply, and the general rule is that you cannot have noise of such character, intensity, or duration as to be detrimental to the life, health of any individual or disturbance of the public peace or welfare. That applies countywide, but there's not a specific one that deals with this type of activity.
And that's open to interpretation by the hearer of the noise?
That's open to the hearer, uh, to the people that issue tickets, and then ultimately to the judge and perhaps a jury.
Well, are there any other questions from the board of commissioners? Planning commission, any more questions to the applicant? Hearing none, you may take your seat.
Can I comment on the noise real quick?
Sure.
Uh, so we've met with, um, the adjacent property owners, uh, Mr. Postel, um, and then Mr. Stewart, and they've, I, I, they're in support of the, uh, special use permit, and the, in our opinion, the way the property will be developed, it'll be, it, it's, you know, we think that the way the property that is developed will limit some of the noise and reduce some noise with the natural buffer and it's, the, how far away it is from somebody that might be disturbed by it.
It'll be the people sleeping due north of you and due east of you.
Yes, sir.
So, um, thank you very much for your input, uh, you can take your seat, uh, if we need to, we'll call you back, or you may utilize, utilize some of the time remaining from when we started questioning you for any rebuttal that may be needed, but at this time, I will ask, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of the application? Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to the application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none? So at this time, um, I will entertain a motion with regard to application twenty-two-two-dash-zero-five-dash-SUP. Please take note of the requested modifications, uh, to the stipulations as to whether or not you want to include those in your motion, how you want to include them in your motion. Again, our consideration here is whether or not the proposed special use falls in compliance or comports with Paulding County's zoning ordinance, as well as the comprehensive plan, future land use map and all of that, uh, but also whether or not you believe it's in the best interest of the area being served, so at this time, if you have a motion, we'll start working through it.
I have a motion to approve with changing number nine to omit a planted buffer to natural buffer, number ten would be a maximum height of thirty-five feet, and, uh, not sure what to do about timeframe, twenty-four seven, as they've requested, and, um, no hazardous material, uh, an added stipulation as number fourteen.
It would be added?
No, there's already a number.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So, that's already included. So there's.
I'll second that with the addition, if it's possible, to, um, add to number thirteen with, that the bill of ladings will be available to fire inspectors on site to, uh, inspection.
Mr. Chair, if I may clarify?
Please.
So we have a motion to approve, uh, with number nine being amended to require a natural buffer, number ten being amended to be a maximum height. Number ten being amended to be a maximum height of thirty-five feet. And then an additional stipulation that no hazardous materials will be stored there. If I recall correctly, um, Ms. Seaver did not make any changes specifically to the other stipulations. Then that motion was seconded by Mr. Leggett. Now, Mr. Leggett, you may have an additional stipulation that you would want to offer. That would have to be in a form to amend the motion that is out there.
Prior to seconding it?
Well, he did second it.
So, do you want to rescind your second and proceed to amend the motion?
And now what I would ask Ms. Seaver if she's willing to amend her motion. Or she would withdraw her motion.
Okay, so, so should we start all over again?
Withdraw your motion.
Okay, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
And then restate a new motion.
And I'm going to rescind a new motion. And I say, uh, we approve with the omitting planted buffer on item nine and change that to natural buffer. Item number ten, the maximum height being thirty-five feet. Number eleven, twenty-four seven as operational hours. And then, uh, and I guess that, then thirteen, they had mentioned construct an office or I would say just have an office, remove the word construct uh, with restroom facilities.
And are you willing to add, let's go ahead and just take care of this now, are you willing to add a stipulation to your motion to allow bill of laden inspections by the fire department on site at, as requested?
And on the, regarding the office, for it to, to be able to be inspected by the fire marshal? And make sure everything is to code?
Does that satisfy your?
Yes.
So being able to inspect the office and bill of laden for containers located at the facility?
And that would, that would cover the hazardous and the flammable materials that we get. I can second that.
Since we're adding a stipulation, I'm going to pause there and just go quickly back to the applicant, would that added stipulation be agreeable to the applicant? Yes.
Yes, sir.
So then we have a motion as stated by Ms. Seaver with the added fourteenth stipulation for the inspection of the bill and laden, bill of laden for containers located on the property at the request of the fire marshal. And then do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Have a second from Mr. Leggett, Leah, did you get all that? So at this time, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, so motion passes four, one and one. Well, that was fun. It will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners, I do suggest that if you have any details you need to work out, that you please get with staff after the meeting has concluded, possibly, uh, go and, uh, have some discussion with the Board of Commissioners as well. Uh, applicant has to be present at tonight's meeting for it to be considered. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, final application twenty-two, twenty-two-two twenty-four Z, application by Carmen and Pamanisadi requesting to rezone a one acre property from B-one General Business District back to R-two suburban residential district for zoning compliance with surrounding residential areas. Property is located in Landlot twelve forty-nine, District Three, Section Three, on the north side of Chester Harris Road, southwest of Dallas Akworth Highway. Address is one fifty-six Chester Harris Drive, Saint Commission Post Four. Staff has recommended approval with three stipulations and the applicant is present.
If you would please come in, uh, come to the lectern, sign in, state your name and then address your comments to the chair.
Yes, my name is Pamanisadi.
My name is Cameron Sadie.
And again, we are here to, uh, request that, uh, the property be rezoned back to residential.
And there were three recommendations of stipulations presented by staff, have you had a chance to review those and are you in agreement with them?
Yes.
Are there any questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
This is a single family home currently right now?
It is, the building is a residential, yes.
Has it ever been used for a commercial?
No, never been used as a commercial, I mean.
Question, Mr. Steele?
Is the building going to be used as is for residence? So no modifications to it?
Not at all.
No add-ons, no tear downs?
Now, this was a zoning we did several years ago, right, and, and then that just never did transpire as what's happened, the residence stayed the way it was. Am I correct?
Yeah, it was, uh, it was, um, zoned commercial back in two thousand and six.
Okay, this is not the same property I was thinking about then, okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
I have a, another question. Were you, were you the owners of the property when it was zoned, um, commercial?
No, no, when we bought it, it was zoned commercial before we bought it.
And has anyone lived in the house as, or has it, it's never been operational as commercial?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Thank you very much, you may take your seat. Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments or concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application twenty-two-two dash twenty-four dash Z. Please keep in mind the three recommended stip, stipulations from staff.
Make a motion to approve with the three listed stipulations.
Have a motion to approve with the three stipulations, from Mr. Steele, do I have a second, Mr. Henson, I have a second, all in favor? Motion passes five, zero and one. Thank you, everybody, for your patience during the meeting, I know there was a lot to get through, but at this time, I'll make everybody's day and entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Steele made the motion, do I have a second? Second from Mr. Henson, all in favor? Motion passes five, zero and one, have a good day.